We will call the order, the Commissioners Meeting this June 26th at 2:08 PM. I will suspend the rules in this meeting until Commissioner Gardner gets here. And we typically start these meetings with a prayer reading or thought, followed by the pledge. That prayer, reading or thought will be by Josh Chapel and then Rudy Livingston, Alitis, and the pledge.
How do you know, Father, how grateful we are to be able to gather today under such favorable circumstances? We're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet in a safe place and to be, live in such a beautiful area. We're grateful for the opportunity that we'll have to celebrate our nation's independence next week. And we are grateful for the men and women who have paid the ultimate sacrifice that we may be able to live in a country where we're able to enjoy the freedoms that we do. We pray as we go through the agenda and the things on the calendar this day that we'll do it in a way that's appropriate. We give thanks unto thee for all that we have, and we say these things humbly in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Josh.
Please join me in honoring our country, those that have served our country and defended this wonderful flag and the flag itself. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As we, let's see, as we begin to build consent and regular agenda items, if Commissioner Gardner were to get logged on and there was an item that we don't hold, we can obviously come back and discuss that, so. But I think, based upon what I see, having a meeting back-to-back weekly, it's pretty, pretty, pretty easy, I guess, so, let's see here. So we will begin with the consent agenda. Is there anything on those 13 items on the consent agenda, Commissioner Sakovic, that you would like to hold off?
Uh, no, I've gone through and though I'm happy with what is there.
Okay, let's go through the regular agenda and then we can add some items and then hold whichever ones you would like to. There, items one through nine, I would like to hold seven.
Hold seven? I'd like to hold, I'd like to hold item 15.
Oh, okay, let's, okay, we'll definitely get that. Let's see, we definitely want to hold 16, and then I also had 14 and 15 as well.
Okay, that works.
So 14, 15, and 16, any others in that group that you would like to?
I, I don't have any at all.
Okay, and then it sounds like for closed session, we'll hold item 17? Is that good? Okay, and we will strike 18, 19, and 20.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, for the consent agenda, everything was approved. Regular agenda, item seven, hold, 14, hold, 15, hold, 16, hold. For the closed meetings, we will do the following, 17, hold, strike 18, 19, and 20.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, I didn't have any conversations with Bryce or his staff about holding this item, but it looks like we've got somebody.
Yes, number seven, is that correct?
Yeah, number seven, this contract with Spanish Fork, expanding their ambulance and fire rescue.
And there might be some confusion, I'm attorney for the sheriff's office, but I work with Kirk Britleson, and it's a crossover between sheriff's, wild and fire and, and.
Bryce, you're off the hook.
So, so all this is doing is amending the fire response map. Springville City decided they didn't want to participate in an inter-local agreement with the county that would allow us to pay them to provide fire and 911 ambulance services outside of their jurisdiction, but within their fire response area in unincorporated county. Mapleton and Spanish Fork City have agreed to absorb their areas, so this is the first contract with Spanish Fork. We're working with Mapleton to get theirs signed as well. That fire response map is provided as an attachment on there, it just shows, to the untrained eye, it looks like a bunch of colors, but to those, those folks, that they can see where the distinction is and where those new fire response areas lie.
Okay, and any conversations in, that you've had that, of confusion that might happen with our county residents up Springville Canyon? If 911's called and.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't see any, any difference or change in service. It'll all go through dispatch, and dispatch will route it through the appropriate fire response agency. So it shouldn't affect the citizens. It should actually increase and help provide more, better response coverage because Springville, or, Springville wasn't willing, but Mapleton and Spanish Fork are better equipped and able to assist in those calls.
Okay, I've had a conversation with Springville's city manager and mayor about this, and have an understanding that the fee that the county has given for the last 30 years has been exactly the same. Confirm that with Spanish Fork as well. And in fact, Spanish Fork was lobbying kind of the state because they're going, hey, we go all the way up to Spanish Fork Canyon, and sometimes it's just hours and hours, you know, and there's only so much cap that they can be reimbursed?
We're tied to the State Forestry and Fire Response Manual and the rates that are set, set in there. And, and those cities did agree to those, and we, we understand that that might not cover all of the service vehicles that they send. We're actually working, I'm actually working with Kirk Britleson, our fire marshal, to address some of those concerns that will provide more coverage and more services for people up there that the fire manual doesn't currently allow. So we're trying to tweak it to adjust and to help make sure that these agencies get reimbursed for the service they provide for county citizens.
Okay, I wanted to highlight that as well, as I know it's been a challenge for those cities, and, and then I just, I really worry about somebody recreating up Hubble Creek.
Absolutely.
Canyon, and, and then, you know, that, that challenge that comes with having to go up there to respond. You know, Mayor Mendenhall of Spanish Fork's argument is, it's that his ambulance crews are service, usually servicing someone that might be heading to Moab, and so they're, they might not even be from our neck of the woods. You know, the likelihood of them being residents of Spanish Fork and the residents of Spanish Fork burdened with that, you know. So, so I want to put that on the radar.
Thank you.
Maybe there's, maybe some conversations that, that should happen that we are paying appropriate.
I think those are ongoing, absolutely.
Okay, so, it sounds like Spanish Fork and Mapleton are two that we do contract, are you aware of?
There's actually a number, quite a few over 10-plus that we have contracts, inter-local agreements with, that help provide these services, we're working on more, so.
Okay, terrific. Any questions from you, Commissioner Sakovic?
None for me, thank you very much.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve item seven.
So, motion?
Okay, I'll second that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And then the property tax actions included in recommendation letter, item 14. Anything specific? I just typically, I think we've kind of held these, I don't know if you have any that are.
So, Adam Beck, County Attorney's Office, I think on this one, yeah, obviously I think there's some recommendations that maybe the applicant doesn't particularly like, but I think the, the recommendations are pretty consistent with how we've handled them in the past. Wasn't aware of any applicants who are going to be here today.
Okay.
So, there's not any that I, I think we need to highlight today. But if you, there's any that you do have any questions on, I, we can certainly answer those, so.
Nothing specifically from me. Commissioner Sakovic, do you have any questions on the tax actions letter?
No, sir, not from me.
Okay.
I'd move to approve.
Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then, so those pass, 15, the Fifth Amendment to Agreement Number 2020-1089 between Utah County and the Public Defenders Association for legal defense during this year. Ezra?
Yeah, I can speak to this one, so, we have a contract with the Utah County Public Defenders Association. It's a, it's a nonprofit that operates in the county for indigent defense services. We funded them this year for just the first two quarters of the year, and wanted to reevaluate after we had an audit completed. That audit's been done, and we, we've had an opportunity to review that, and have now an opportunity to establish the funding amounts for quarters three and four. There's been a number of recommendations throughout the year. The latest one, I believe you all have a copy of that, kind of shows the, the three different tiers of, of categories that are available, or funding levels that are available, and their requests in, in that document, primarily for, for new attorneys, for additional defense resources, and also for a pay increase, a pay parity increase for the attorneys. That's aiming to be consistent with what we've done in the past for our prosecutor's office.
Okay, excellent. I see Commissioner Gardner on the phone, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes. We are on item 15, the amendment for the Public Defenders Association. Let's, let's see, Commissioner Sakovic, do you have any recommendations? I know this is in your portfolio.
Yes, I'm looking at quarters three and four, but my inclination, because of the growth of the county, and we've talked about this in the past meetings, that we need to go to the high end of this whole thing, so I'm looking at the 653. The 753.
The 773,000?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'm at a different level. I'm, I'm currently sitting at like four additional attorneys this year and one social worker. So the five individuals, as well as giving a step increase and a COLA-type idea. But there's some conversation that I've had with Debbie and Josh before the meeting about, you know, that, that top number of the almost 300,000, that step increase, but I think we can kind of get that figured out. If we were to look at, you know, somewhere in the 4% helps with the parity conversation, and then those additional, four additional attorneys and one social worker. And then I also, further down, the conversation of holding truth in taxation, knowing that we'll probably need to add additional attorneys for next year. And my, in my mind, I'm thinking adding those three additional attorneys at the start of 2025. Commissioner Gardner?
Yeah, so as I looked at this, I, and I'm just pulling up the details now on my laptop as I jump into.
Additionally, sorry to interrupt, I just forwarded up for an email from, from Benjamin Young with some more detail on that salary increase request that was just sent.
Oh, fantastic, okay. So on the sal, on the salary increase, I think, I mean, we can look at the, the public defender's contract. I know we're looking at it as a whole, but if we break it down piece by piece, as far as the increase goes, we don't give our employees increases dating back to other quarters. And their initial request has a backdate for quarters one and two, and I think it would be not only completely odd, but unprecedented, and frankly ridiculous for us to give a third-party vendor backdating of salary increases when we don't even do that for our own employees. Now, I'm willing to look moving forward, but as far as quarters one and two, that doesn't even play into it for me because we don't go back and give our employees raises for the past, but we could look at three and four. And then as far as for three and four, I think coming up with a number that is more in line with what our employees actually received, because we gave them parity last year. So they received parity with our employees last year, and then our employees received an increase this year. And if we want to stay with parity, then the increase for their employees should be in line with what we gave our employees. Which, I think, those things considered, that number just for pay parity or pay increase comes in significantly less than what they have requested. What I would like to do is have our HR department do a parity study, just like we do for all of our employees, and then I would be willing to take the recommendation from, from HR based on that. But that's as far as the parity goes. With regards to new employees or new attorneys, we've approved three new employees for our prosecutor's office, and so I would feel comfortable with three more attorneys for them. Once again, keeping on par with what we're doing for our own departments. So I think, Commissioner Gordon, you had said four, I'm okay with three and as a social worker. So there would be four total employees that I would like, rather than five, so three employees, three attorneys, same as we gave our, our prosecutors for the new courts, and then a social worker. That's where I'm standing on those two issues.
And then, and then is it, are you comfortable with a percentage for the step increase?
Yeah, I would say, I, I would be fine passing a percentage of 4% because we gave our employees a 2% merit increase and then a 2% salary study increase, and so I would match that, and I don't necessarily know what that number is right now, but I would be fine passing a motion that says we give them an increase of 4%, just like we did our prosecutors, yeah.
Okay. So, as I see it with the, the new, you know, so the four that I'm looking at, you know, saying, the two district attorneys, one and two, an appeals attorney, the juvenile attorney, and then the social worker. So, that, that for me is, is, is really after meeting with the public defenders, like a bare minimum for this, for them, for quarter three and four? So it sounds like we're, we're on the same page with, with the 4%. Sounds like we agree there, but.
Um, I could come, I could come to the core, knowing that, well, and I was, I was planning on in January, giving them a few more, and then, you know, and stepping it in, and then July, a few more. And so I could, I could be persuaded to, you know, to compromise with you on that. If we can agree on a 4% increase, just knowing that if we give them four new attorneys rather than the three that I was thinking, that's going to reflect in what we have to do with truth in taxation. Because we don't ha, we don't have the, we don't have the luxury of giving money we don't have away, which means that if we're going to be signing contracts and obligating the county to pay that amount and doing it in perpetuity into the future, then we're going to have to account for that in, in setting a budget for next year and in what we collect in taxes, so.
Yes, and what we collect in taxes will reflect in the, our numbers as we crunch them a little bit further. I, the fact that we're. I'd like to continue this, not continue, I want to continue the conversation just for a minute more, if I may.
Sure.
Um, we do have, we do have a bit of an, of an issue in that our current contract funding expires in four days. And so we really should vote on this today if we can, so that we can have a funding contract in place before that one expires.
Yeah, I think what Commissioner Sakovic is asking.
I was at dinner, oh, okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, was that? I would say I was at dinner with the public defenders until almost eight o'clock on Monday night, right? I mean, just because I didn't have time to fit it in my schedule, but knowing the urgency of this.
What's the answer?
I met with them earlier today, they're gracious enough to be here as well. I, I, I think I got kind of a good head nod from Josh and Debbie that, you know, the, the four attorneys and the social worker and the 4% was, gets us into that.
I think Ben had provided that additional.
And then Ben.
Shows the sheriff on the, on the number that we provided.
Uh huh.
And then I don't know if you've discussed the.
Yeah, and we haven't talked about the additional defense resources as well. I mean, that was on my priority list as well. Those were my, those were my three priorities coming in with defense resources, which we can talk about that now, and then, and then a 4% increase, and then, like I said, I had said three positions, you said four positions, tomato, tomato, I can compromise just knowing that in a few agenda items, that's going to come up.
Yeah, actually, yeah, the, in the next, in the next item, you know, whatever. We, we know we've got to come up with a number for truth in taxation, and for me, you know, it looks like slotting in a $5 million number of that truth in taxation for public defenders is, now, I know that's just us setting a ceiling and, and trying to decide on that number, but that's substantial for the 2025 budget, right?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Then with all of that, I think I'm happy to make a motion to approve the 2%. Yeah, Brandon, would you make the motion again, please?
Sure, 4% representing 2% COLA, 2% step increase, four new attorneys and one new social worker.
I can, I can go with that, thank you.
Okay, is that a second?
Yeah, if that was a motion, yeah, I would say if that was a motion, I can, I can second that motion.
Okay.
Do we need to talk about defense resources too, though, on this same agenda item?
It'd be really helpful, yes.
Yeah, so Ezra, do you want to maybe give us an idea on defense resources and what the number we're looking at there is?
The ask whether low, medium, or high is 503,000, 220.
I could go with that, I was thinking 500, yeah, I was thinking 500,000, so 503 is.
So, I'll amend my motion to, to include that.
Yeah, and that, that would include, we're leaving one, one capital case with them.
Yep.
So that would help cover the cost for them.
We did talk about that.
Okay. Okay, all right, so, and I can, and I can second that, I consider that a friendly amendment, I can second that with the 503,000 for defense resources.
Okay. All right. Motion and a second?
That sounds great, good.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I guess the only thing that might not be clear is the 4%. Are you taking that 4% off of just the existing wages that Ben just emailed you? Or are you going off of the audited numbers? Is that, is that a gray area at all for you, or are you?
Um, a little bit, so, so.
Because we did talk about that a little bit, but I just don't know where that, I, I want to make sure, and Commissioner Gardner's talked about HR, you know, doing, doing an analysis as well, and so I just want to make sure that it's very clear.
Yeah, we could look at that if we wanted to look at all the positions, because in, in that spreadsheet, you'll see that includes all the attorneys, the paralegals, the office, office folks. We could do 4% based on all that, or if we wanted to look at specifically the attorneys, or if we just wanted to do a deeper dive on all the parity on all the positions, that's something that HR could provide.
Okay. I just didn't want you to come back mad at us because we told you something and it was confusing. I know there was a conversation about that percentage being like 184,000 versus almost 300.
Yeah, so if, if we look at the full year cost, 4%, if we just look at all the salaries for all the positions across the board, that's about 250,000, 252, 294, more specifically. If we wanted to say, moving forward for Q3 and 4, that brings that number down to 126. We could leave it up to them to, to make the decision on how to allocate those. But we could also provide some recommendations based on what our, our HR office proposes with the salary, salary analysis, based on what we're paying our positions.
Okay. Sounds like, does that raise any red flags for either of you two?
I mean, I think that you'd have to talk with Ben Young.
Okay, okay.
No, I'm good.
I think it sounds like we'll, we're at a good spot.
Just to clarify the.
You got to come to the microphone, sorry, Josh, I got to let my other two here.
Um, I think that the, the reason for the request to have it backdated is, that has happened in the past with us, and we did make the request at the end of the year last year. We were, you know, here's two, two quarters and an audit, and then the county attorney did get the, the bump last year, so they had it this full year, but just to clarify why that is in there.
Okay.
Yeah, so our, our cost of living adjustment, that I believe applied in April, and then for step increases, we usually do on the employee's anniversary date, so we don't do a standardized dollar amount across the board.
Okay.
Or time across the board.
Yeah, so you might have seen it, and yeah, so you thought in our budget, but we, it doesn't actually take effect. It's so, like Ezra said, we went more than a quarter without the cost of living increase, and the merit increase doesn't take effect in January either, so. And we just, it just reflects in our budget as of January.
All right. Item 15 is approved, we'll go to item 16, which is adopting a resolution, providing notice about truth in taxation.
Hey, Commissioner, can we, can we just go back to, to 15 for a second?
Sure.
Um, I feel like it was clear on personnel, four attorneys and a social worker.
Four attorneys and a social worker.
Four attorneys and a social worker. It was clear on defense resources.
4%.
On the salaries.
Ex, yes, existing salary increases, 2% COLA, 2% step.
4%.
So four.
Moving forward for that.
Yeah, yeah, moving forward.
For third and fourth quarter.
Yeah, third and fourth quarters.
Yeah, for third and fourth quarter.
Do you want, you got a dollar number there, Ezra?
Uh, yeah, so that, I calculated that dollar amount to be 126,147.02. So we would just include that to the other two dollar amounts, and then split that up between quarters three and quarter four. And that's how the language would be written into the contract, along with the other provisions.
Okay. Okay, it sounds like you can get maybe that information to Ben as well, so he can digest it.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Good now, Paul?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. All right. All right, now item sixteen, uh, let's see here. Um, Ezra, do you want to tee this up or do you want uh? You want me to say something?
Yeah, um, no, I'm happy to tee this up. So this is a, a resolution um initiating what's called the truth and taxation process. Um, this is a process specifically prescribed in Utah State Code that any agencies that would like to collect more than the certified tax rate for, uh, for the next year would need to post this resolution, have a public hearing that's after six P M. Uh, basically a number of provisions to inform the public why we're, we're proposing this uh adjustment to the tax rate and what those dollar amounts would be used for. And those are all needing to be stated in the meeting, and then we'd also provide an approximate percentage of what those increases would be. Uh, from here, we would send out notices to every, um, every homeowner, every property within the county, notifying them of the proposed increase, uh, to give them an opportunity to voice their concerns, um, learn more about it. Um, I know Rod has already arranged for, for a public work session. We've already had um a work session last year, kind of teeing up the subject as well. Um, but now we've, we've got some additional analysis from him, uh, as well as additional uh, notes from the different departments and, and their needs. Uh, so this would begin that process officially here, here at the county and then um, this would ultimately be voted on later this year as an adoption of our 2025 budget.
And there were some money savings by doing this, mailing it combined, right, with our, with our existing postage. Do you know what that number was by sending it out? Ish? Seventy-five?
I know in twenty nineteen it was
Seventy-five.
It, uh, it's today, in twenty nineteen, it was fifty thousand and we've had a lot of inflation since then, so seventy-five sounds like about right, seventy-five thousand dollars.
That's, it's, it's between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars in savings.
Yep, okay.
Um, by combining it with the uh parcel specific notice, notice with the valuation notice that goes out uh June, July twenty-second. There's going to be incremental cost because we're adding a sheet of paper. So that's nominal compared to what the overall price is, so. It's useful, it's, it gives the residents one more, just one envelope to open up for both things. And I, I think you're wise to do the public hearing in, in August because that will give people who want to look into this deeper and extended period time to do that, we'll have the budget open houses on the twenty-sixth of September. And, and then we won't vote on it till end of November, early December. So lots of time to look at things. Uh, one of the things that we did when we put this five-year plan together and when we do budgets in general is you, we estimate revenues conservatively on the low end of probab- of the probability range. And then on the expense side, we estimate higher. I think it's especially important on this one to know that, that we, we're doing that, so last week I said, uh, twenty-five million was what, or twenty million was what I thought the maximum would be. But we had things come to light since then. We listened to your suggestions last week. And we now have, if you want to look at uh, this tax change planning sheet that we have for Fund One Hundred, you can see by putting twenty, that the, the deficits looking ahead. Uh, Rudy, can you take out the twenty-five? Can you make that zero in, in the yellow row there? Make that zero. And then let's go back up. Um, we're looking at uh eighteen million dollars uh in twenty-five and then negative twenty-four, almost twenty-five million in twenty-six. And so we would like to recommend uh twenty-five as the upper limit. Um, what we haven't done is, as the year goes through, we'll look at sales tax revenues, because there's variability in that. We'll look at the new requests and, and refine those, and that could move up or down. Um, Rudy, can you click on the uh twenty-five, twenty-six changes? One of the things I did just in the last couple of days is look at, okay, what's changed? Why are we asking for more? And in really rough numbers, I looked for the big changes that were there. And I, just to do a sanity check, say, are we in the ballpark? And so those are the items there under the attorney's office. Um, they're asking for a number of them this year. Additionally, they're going to ask for more next year in twenty-five. For ten more, and then you may decide to stagger them. There, we're looking at five one-year, five in twenty-five, and five in twenty-six. You may choose to stagger them differently. The, the C J C, the ARPA money's running out, and so we're going to have to subsidize them more if we're to keep the same level of service, and I, I think everybody that has talked to them and visited with them have seen the impact that they're having on our community, and you wouldn't want to eliminate that. So that's one to continue. Um, the clerks are asking for nominal this year and then new equipment next year. Um, community development is asking for some more resources with all the activity happening. We, we do need a, public defenders, we put an additional two and a half million, just swagging that. That's subject to change.
Well, I was going to say, I think we just approved more than that.
Yeah.
I think we literally just approved more than that, so that number's already wrong because the last agenda item was more than that.
Right.
And then, because the, the last agenda item was one point, was it one point two million dollars? And that was half a year, which means that's two point five uh additional on top of what we already had budgeted, so I think that's going to be closer to like five. On top of that, the nine point eight million deficit for twenty twenty-four that you have in the bottom line for total budget, we just increased that in the vote that we just took. So that nine point eight needs to increase, which means the twenty twenty-five is going to be higher than nineteen.
Correct.
So what we do today is we set a ceiling.
We set a ceiling and we, we know it's going to get further refined, and I, I think twenty-five million is a, a reasonable ceiling. You could ask for more than that, but I, I think twenty-five's reasonable. Um, given that we're gonna be, you know, maybe twenty-two, twenty-three next year and then more than twenty-five the following year. Um, I, I think we're in good shape. This is just, um, it's really a high-level projection, so I didn't, in this one, I just looked at what are the big changes? If we go back to the tax change planning, you'll see with additional refinements that the, the plan deficit this year is, or for next year is eighteen. We just added another two and a half, maybe three, so we're, we're probably looking at twenty-two, twenty-three. And then twenty-four, twenty-five will go up to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And if you balance between those, that's twenty-five million on average for each year, so I think, and remember, this is conservative revenues and conservative on the expense side, which means high, so I think that's reasonable for the next two years, and we've talked about in the last year that we're going to look at tax changes every two years. Um, because we'll have better data. We need to do long-range planning just to give visibility. Um, so I'm comfortable with twenty-five as a max. Again, if you wanted to raise that for some kind of a fudge factor, I wouldn't.
No, I think that, I think that makes sense, considering the decisions we just made, yeah, like considering the vote we just made and your recommendation. Um, I think that there's going to be more requests that we haven't considered, just because we're only halfway through the year, and I think that gives us the buffer to consider those. I think that's a fair assessment, Rod.
Okay, so I'm
I think, sorry, between our deficit and uh prosecution and the public defenders, we're twenty million right there.
Yes.
And so we are, we'll work we'll work that really, you know, for who knows what sales tax.
Yeah.
You know, if it's, if it's flat, I know you've got around four and a half percent estimated, you know. That's a tough one.
Uh, as we discussed last week on sales taxes, there's a six million dollar probability range, and we're on the very low end of that right now, what we're for, what the budget was, so there's upside there. We'll know more. And every month we know more. I got the latest tax data today, hadn't had a chance to look at it, but you know, in, in September, when we do the budget open house, we'll have three more months than what we have now or what we had yesterday, and then when we vote on it at the end of the, towards the end of the year, you'll have about three quarters worth of data, so that'll be kind of pretty solid, I, I think, so we'll have better numbers. Um, and I, and I, I think where a lot of this is going towards public defenders and our civil, and our prosec- prosecutorial resources. Given the outcome of the last election, where they overwhelmingly, residents overwhelmed, who wanted us to do more on that end, uh, I think that makes sense.
Well, once you add in the Children's Justice Center and the Sheriff's Department, that's eighty to ninety percent of it. It's all criminal justice and public safety.
You know, the voters have spoken on that in my mind with the outcome of the ele- the election a year and a half ago, and so I'm very confident that one, that there will be opposition to a tax increase, there always is, but also, I'm very confident when you walk through it with people, they'll be understanding.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. You and I have had conversations in depth about, you know, it's not like we're spending it on something that people can really argue is, is not a necessity.
Yes.
Um, and so, um, maybe recreation in our cities and things like that, right? Oftentimes, those are very scrutinized. So, um, you've written down here at the bottom, Rudy typed in the twenty-five million. If, if that was the ceiling, that's uh, that's got some, some numbers that the calculation spits out. Do you want to touch on those, Rudy or Rod?
Yeah, let's go to the other tax calculation sheet that has
One, one thing that I also wanted to add is one big increase that we've got is we have a long-awaited impro- improvements to the mental health ward and the medical ward over at the jail, which is absolutely required, and that's going to require a significant increase in staffing costs, about two, a little over two million dollars for that. So I mean, that's one, another thing to add in the equation that is absolutely crucial to what we're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
So Rudy, can you switch to the, the tat, the, the spreadsheet? I'll tab it.
But I have to switch to share.
Okay. Okay, so this is, this is one that I got from ta- tax admin, Bert, thank you, Bert. Um, and this has the information that you're going to want on the on the sh- on the, the resolution, so I'll, I can just read those to you. So we're asking for on the general fund, a twenty-five million dollars taxing, a twenty-five million dollar tax increase, which translates to a proposed tax rate of point zero zero nine five nine six five, can you?
And zero 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 nine five, there's three zeros there.
Okay, so point zero 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 nine six five, which is equivalent to a forty-seven point nine nine percent increase. And for the average impact on an, impact on an average home, that'll be an extra ninety-five dollars a year in total.
Um, okay. Ninety-one dollars and it's up seven fifty a month. Yeah, seven dollars and fifty cents a month.
Yes, and then on the assessing collecting side, we had a million dollars last week, it, it didn't change. And so the numbers are the same as they were last week, which is a proposed tax rate of point zero 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 one two one. Uh, a percentage tax increase of ten point eight six and an annual impact on the average home of three dollars and forty-six cents. So
Those numbers add up to a very round ninety-five dollars even.
You know, I planned that. But we had a one that happening, and it did, so ninety-five dollars a year.
Well, again, I think what you, what you've done, getting everybody in the room, every department, like we've done, and discussing early on in this year, what, what they see, their forecast, has really helped, you know, each department understand different needs. Um, I think that was, that was really beneficial, and we'll still work this, you know, the, the twenty-five to, you know, see if, see if we can get better on that.
Yeah, and so I always like, I don't like to set, um, and expectations unduly, but I would expect some movement down, maybe not a lot, but some.
Yeah, whereas cities on a July first, it's, it's interesting because they, they sort of signal this before their budget's even done, and then they have their truth in taxation even after it, and it's, you know, um, where ours is will go into effect on January first of
Of, right.
Twenty-five.
And so this is going to affect the tax rate for your twenty twenty-five tax bill, which you won't get until November twenty twenty-five, so we're way ahead of the curve. And, and that's our ceiling, and we, we could, we could make adjustments uh, when we approve the budget in and towards the end of the year, and we could also make another adjustment if it was warranted before we had to finalize the tax rates in June of next year. So if, if circumstances warrant, we could make another adjustment in June.
Okay.
And then we'll be looking at this again in two years. And we want the changes to be small, and if we do it regularly, we can do that instead of waiting. Last one we did was in twenty nineteen, so that was five years ago. And a lot has changed in those five years, right? We had ARPA, we, we had COVID, we had changes to how people expect governments to do business and it, it's also made us more efficient in some ways, right? Yeah, we've had to tighten belts in some places, and we've expanded in C J C, and we've seen what their values are. And that's great, because they are actually, you know, what they do is affects children, which affects them the rest of their life and has an impact on society in general.
Very good. Yeah, I appreciate this being a tool that the Taxpayers Association has come up with, with, you know, giving us this opportunity. Let's see, any other questions for Rod or Rudy Commissioners?
No, I think that this all looks uh very reasonable and in um, I appreciate the work that went into this in the last seven days to, to come back with it, with the numbers that I feel uh, fully encompasses all of the, the challenges that we're facing moving forward, particularly with the expiration of ARPA funds and the growth of the county, so thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, this is extraordinary work, extraordinary work. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. One other thing, uh, Bert and I met with I T earlier this week and last week. And we're setting up, and it will be on the notice, a landing page for the county's T and T process. And we're going to have this recording on there. We'll have information about the budget open house. And we're also working with I T for people to be able to put in the value of their property as assessed, and then they'll be able to see not just our rate, but all the rates that are applicable to that property, so they'll be able to get a personalized view of, of that. And our goal is to have that available on the twenty-second. There might be some delay with the calculation thing, um, but certainly by the budget open house, that'll all be taken care of.
Do you know the average home right now?
Our return value is in the county's five hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, so if, you know, if you're
I think that's a little, I think it's up a little bit from that. I think that might have been last year. I think the last results that we got from the Realtors Association is it was closer to like five sixty, but yeah, it's pretty cool.
But thanks for doing that. That tool will be helpful.
The, that's the number the county gave us on their assessed rolls, so this was the number we got from
Yeah.
Garfield. Now, actual values are, they're on the, they're on the low end. But the actual value, like, I, I would concur that it's a little bit higher than that, so five sixty seems reasonable.
Perfect. And I need to read this resolution. Okay? That now. Whereas, the Board of U- of County Commissioners of Utah County, Utah, desires to provide notice as required by Utah Code fifty-nine dash two dash nine one nine, in order to levy tax rates that exceed the certified tax rates and to set a public hearing to discuss the proposal to levy tax rates that exceed the certified tax rate and to discuss Utah County. and to discuss Utah County's twenty twenty-five calendar year budget for the general fund and other budgetary funds of Utah County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of, of County Commissioners of Utah County, Utah, as follows. The Board of County Commissioners of Utah County, Utah, provides notice and states the following. Utah County intends to levy a tax rate that exceeds the county's certified tax rate, A, for the county general fund, and, B, for the county assessing and collecting fund. The dollar amount of additional ad valorem tax revenue that would be generated by the proposed increase in the certified tax rate is twenty-five million for the general fund and one million for the assessing and collecting fund. The additional ad valorem tax revenue that would be generated for the proposed increase in the certified tax rate would be utilized by the county as follows. For the general fund, for all lawful purposes, including the funding of law enforcement and public safety needs, road and infrastructure, necessary capital improvements and public services to address the needs of growth throughout the county, and for the assessing and collecting fund, for all lawful purposes, including to promote the accurate valuation and uniform assessment levels of property and to promote the efficient administration of the property tax system. The approximate percentage increase in the ad valorem tax revenue for the county based on the proposed tax increase is forty-seven point nine nine percent for the general fund and ten point eight six percent for the assessing and collecting fund. The date, time, and location for a public hearing to discuss the proposal to levy tax rates that exceed Utah County certified tax rates, and for the first public hearing to discuss Utah County's twenty twenty-five budget for the general fund and other budgetary funds of Utah County is hereby set for Thursday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six PM, in room fourteen hundred of the county administration building at one hundred East Center Street in Provo, Utah. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
I'll make the motion to accept the.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that passes, thank you everyone. And before we go into closed session, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll go into closed session, thanks. Jason?